Mike? Good evening, everybody. It's the meeting of February 25th. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Oh, I do, Lou, remind me, I have my checkbook in my pocket.
It's amazing when 32 degrees is warm, isn't it? It really is. We're going to start off this evening with a presentation from the Frank Souza family, and that family's here, I know, if you wanted to come up.
Hi, welcome.
Welcome. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Jennifer, and these are my children Miguel and Sofia. And we are dedicating a painting that my father painted in 1976 for the bicentennial. Should I repeat myself, or, yeah, okay, hi. My name is Jennifer Souza Ramirez, and these are my children Miguel and Sofia. And we are dedicating one of my father's paintings. He passed away last July, and this was hanging in his garage. And I talked to Mr. Texera last year about donating this, and then I talked again to Tim Sweeney, and Tim has helped me get this going and to do the actual dedication. So we're here today to present this beautiful painting that my dad painted in 1976 for the bicentennial. I don't know if any of you remember, it was a big year for our parade because it was our 200th anniversary, American history, right, 200th? And my father commemorated the bicentennial with a painting of George Washington mounted on a horse. And this hung at the Kaiser Aluminum Building here in Bristol for a number of years until he retired in the late 1980s. And it was also featured him and his foreman in the Bristol Phoenix underneath the painting. So it's pretty, it was done with a lot of love and a lot of skill that my father possessed. His full-time job was a cable maker at Kaiser Aluminum, but his real love was art, oils, acrylics, still lifes. He painted scenes of Bristol, he painted scenes of Bristol Harbor. He painted religious figures. He loved Bristol more than anybody I know. He lived here for 86 years of his life, was born in 1927 on Bayview Avenue. And here today are people that he loved so much, his baby sister, Agnes, her husband, Joe, his best friends, Mr. Joe Mello, Mr. Malloy, and Joe's daughter, Joanne, who he loved very much, and my dead son-in-law also, Maurice, is here. So I'm very happy that I have this opportunity to share this beautiful painting with everybody. My dad was very arrogant about his art, but in a good way, and I know that he's here with us in spirit, and that this will be a piece of him here in the town hall of the town he loved so very much and was so proud to be from. He was a true Bristol native, and he'll always be part of the town, especially present here. Thank you for this opportunity. Tim, thank you, Mr. Texera, for this opportunity. So who would like to help me unveil the painting?
I'd love to help you.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great job.
We actually have a citation for you and your family, and I'm going to read it out loud here if you'll allow me. The family of Frank T. Souza. "Mr. Souza was a good and loyal citizen of the town, a loving family man, a praiseworthy United States Army veteran, an accomplished artist whose beautiful works of art are known and displayed around the world. In presentation of this citation, the Honorable Town Administrator and Honorable Town Council of the Town of Bristol, State of Rhode Island, and Providence Plantations, on behalf of all of the citizens of said town, recognizes with admiration and utmost gratitude the accomplishments of Frank T. Souza, and in particular, his artistic talent upon the occasion of the presentation of an important work for display in the town hall in fond memory of this remarkable individual." Signed by Town Administrator Tony Texera, myself, Tim Sweeney, Vice Chair, Mary Perella, Ed Stewart, Halsey Harashoff, and Lou Sherrillo, excuse me. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Tim, you want to grab? Thank you. Please.
Jennifer, I would just like to say thank you very much to you and your family for coming this evening to donate this lovely portrait. And I think it's only fitting that here in the town of Bristol, that a portrait that hung at a staple in this community for many families, I know many of my relatives worked at Kaiser, and many generations, that it just goes on and on. So I think a lot of residents that come visit and do their business to the town hall will really enjoy seeing that painting once more as it hangs here in the Bristol Town Hall. So thank you.
Thank you. Very nice, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Lou?
Chairman and members of the Town Council, the first item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is submission of minutes of previous meetings, Items A, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Then we have an advertised public hearing. This is on petition of Joseph Cruzares for CNC Donuts Incorporated, doing business at Dunkin' Donuts, 381 Medicom Avenue, petition for additional hours of operation for the vitrine license. The matter was continued from February 4th.
And this is a second reading?
Well, this is the public hearing.
Public hearing, excuse me. So in open the public hearing, is anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Anyone to speak against? Anyone to speak against?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the hours that are proposed here.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next item is Item C-1. This is ordinance 2015-01. This is an ordinance that would reduce the number of Class BV intoxicating beverage licenses from 29 to 28. This is the second reading for adoption.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve the ordinance 2015-1, Chapter 17, offenses and miscellane provisions, Article 2, regarding alcoholic beverage establishments.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, Item D-2. This is the petition of Audrey Mello, doing business as Haley Jeans Tattoo, 208 Gooding Avenue, request for tattooing license. You have several recommendations provided. There is a kind of a further consideration. The ordinance allows only to have two licensees in the town, and currently there are two bona fide licensees. However, it appears as though neither one of them is currently operating, and we have reason to believe, although not specifically confirmed, that at least one of those licensees does not wish to continue anymore and does not wish to seek a renewal of the license.
When does that license expire, Lou?
That is March 31. So it's coming up fairly quickly. My suggestion is you may want to wish to hear from the petitioner, okay? And as a possible action would be possibly to consider granting the license subject to a confirmation from the police department that, in fact, one of those licensees is no longer going to operate and wishes to surrender their license.
Couldn't we just hold off and just make that final decision at the end of the month? I mean, it's not that far away.
Well, the only reason why I mention it, and I have talked to the petitioner, in that the young lady would like to begin fairly soon, and has made some point of an investment toward this end. So I think that's why it might be a good idea to hear from the petitioner.
Is the petitioner here?
Yeah.
Come on up, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Tell us a little bit about it.
Okay, I do know that the two shops have closed down within this past year. I am renting a spot on 208 Gooding Ave from Frank Andrews, Sr., and we've put money into it so far to put the walls up. And I was just pretty much waiting for the okay from the Town Council so I can go ahead with the legal aspect of it and start it, to get it running, up and running.
Okay.
Very good.
Chief, did you want to, obviously I see the approval here, or the suggestion for approval?
Sure. If you give me 24 hours to 48 hours, I'll forward something through the Town Administrator's office, and we'll let you know whether or not those other businesses are in fact operating or not. We'll monitor the locations, we'll attempt to contact the owners of the business, and we'll give you confirmation in writing.
Well, I mean, they could also just surrender their license, couldn't they? I mean, they could just say, you know, can't they just give it up?
They could, absolutely. Because if they don't, if they don't put in the paperwork to renew, it's going to expire March 31 anyhow.
Right, I mean, I'd hate to, I don't mind approving it subject to any of those conditions. I just, you know, it's not, to me, it's not worth going through, adding another license to this if it's going to be the case.
Well, that would take you two meetings anyway. That'd be an audit change. You're not going to be able to do that as quickly as...
So, I mean, is it easier just to just get them to say, I'm not, I don't have any intent to renew, or to just say, you know, I'm just, here's my license, I'm, I mean, it's only a month? What is the best course of action, Mike, in that?
If, I think what the chief is suggesting is that if he can confirm within the next 48 hours that they're not renewing and he can get that in writing, then this woman could open now, that's, instead of waiting till April 1. That's, I think, what's...
That's how I'll make my motion, Mr. Chairman, to grant the tattooing license to Haley Jeans Tattoo, which is occupied by Audrey Mello, across to all state laws and town ordinances, but subject to our town ordinance that our chief of police make communication with the existing two applicants that currently hold the license, and it be said that one be forfeited, or if it's subject that there's in writing that they're going to surrender it by March 31st, that we can grant you this tonight upon that. And that, I just have a question on, I noticed your health license is up to date, but expires 2015, so should I attach part of the motion that even though these licenses, Lou, are due on March, make sure that you, as an owner, are up to date after December of 2015, that you have your health license for 2016, up until when we renew our licenses?
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I do. I feel remiss, Halsey's not here.
Yeah, I know.
I feel like I should say something.
I know.
Instead of four to nothing, it would have been, you know, four to one, but...
For those of you who don't know, Halsey's vehemently opposed to tattoos, so.
Oh.
You picked a fortunate meeting to be here.
Tattoo palers. I don't know about tattoos, tattoo palers.
Tattoos, tattoo palers, that's all I'll say. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the petition of Jason Andrea Michaels, request council consideration for a curb cut. This was continued from your February 4th meeting.
Jim?
I've had contact with the landscape architect, her name is Sarah Bradford, she's engaged a local civil engineer to work on some of the drainage questions, issues, and easements. I'd suggest either continuing this for maybe two meetings from now, or maybe just table it, and when they get back to me with a plan, then maybe revisit that, because I can't predict when that plan will show up on my desk to review. It could take a week, it could take a month, I just don't know.
So should we just receive and file this now, and then just have it come back?
Probably, yeah.
You concur, Lou?
That's fine, I mean, it's not, it's not something that requires any specific amount of time, it just requires that we get the recommendation. So if the, maybe the director can advise the Michaels that when they're ready and you have a recommendation, they can come back in and put it on as long as it gets in time for a meeting. I mean, that's, that's the only pitfall, is that, is that it could possibly come in, like, on a, you know, on a Tuesday when the meeting is Wednesday.
If I may, I do respect your opinion on that, but we know that you had some requests on their behalf, they've been very accommodating, especially with the topical driveway is one of the state-of-the-art standards for stormwater runoff. I believe they've been in communication with you for the drainage, the plowing, and your department's ready to accommodate that, but there has to be a revised plan from the civil engineer. I'm just curious, Mr. Chairman, if my colleagues feel appropriate, that we have faith in our Director of Public Works, that according to the revised plan with the civil engineer and his communication, subject to that, if we can just pass the curb cut tonight, and then if there's a problem where our director sees fit that he's not going to approve the plan, then maybe we could go accordingly to put it back on our agenda.
I think that's a good idea, I mean, just approve it pending, you know, to the satisfaction of our director in the administration, that's good.
I think that's a good approach, I like that.
Is there a motion, Ed?
Yes, it was part of the motion.
And Mary second?
Yes.
Any other discussion? I think it's a wonderful idea, too, let's move this forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
The next item is the, first item under the Public Service Appointments section, you have the Special Constable's Fire Police with the recommendations from the fire chief.
Make a motion to approve the list submitted by the fire chief for the Fire Police roster 2015.
There's a motion, second, and any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Similarly, you have the Special Constables, private investigators, matrons, and retiree officers, and the recommendation of the chief of police.
Make a motion to approve that list as submitted by the police chief.
Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, this is also one of those ask-and-you shall receive things, because a little while ago, we had no one with interest in specifically in the Board of Tenants of Fares, and now we have four people interested.
That's wonderful.
All expressing interest in participation, so that's a great thing. You have the names of Donald Luminello, 1014 Hope Street, Robert Burns, 1014 Hope Street, Elizabeth Burns, 1014 Hope Street, and Pasquale Delessio, also 1014 Hope Street, all asking council consideration for the three positions that are available.
I spoke to Lou earlier about a potential extra meeting next Tuesday. Potentially, we could talk about doing these interviews on that Tuesday.
So that'll work for me. Make a motion to continue this item to next Tuesday?
To instruct me to set the interviews.
To set up the interviews.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
The, continue from your February 4th meeting, is Item H-1. This has to do with the ongoing concerns about Fairview Drive, and you do have a late item from the Beta Group, Kevin Aguirre, regarding the wastewater treatment plant drainage improvements.
Did you want to speak to this, Jim, or Tony?
Yes, I can speak to it briefly. The, there was a request as to what would entail if, in fact, we were to go through, and what would be the source of funding, actually, to do the design for the project as well. So that information was provided as to what the cost would be, and not just for the design itself, but also the engineering design, but also the cost of the project. So that's the information we have at this point. And as you know, we have not identified a source of funding at this point, because there was not one of the items that was budgeted, although there's something before you this evening that probably could assist along with that.
Okay. I would just like to ask Tony, going forward with this project, I know Beta has a relationship with us, and they have done many projects for us, but just keep in mind, things I noticed part of their proposal is the punch list items and supplemental items, and we know firsthand, we just have to keep an eye on those, because even though they said they're not going to exceed their proposal, it's the things like supplemental items and punch list items that can make a project overrun extensively. So I think between all of us, that's just the caution I have on this project.
Thank you.
So it's the council's pleasure.
I make a motion, we should even file and have the administration, through administration and Director of Public Works. Do you have to come back to us with this, or?
Well, if we can identify, yes.
Yeah, it's like a twofold, yeah.
It would be part of the projects.
So you want to...
The capital projects.
Can it be...
So you could actually just move forward, just at this point.
Receive and file? That way, we can keep it going, because I know there's a timeline, which I have to say is good news, how Beta put a timeline on their project, so we've been asking for that, so. I'll second the motion.
There's a motion that was seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, the, the next item is also continued from February 5th. This has to do with Councilman Stewart's inquiry regarding the road improvement program. You have a supplemental information provided by the administrator regarding his notice of meeting scheduled.
As you can see from the memo, we'll be meeting tomorrow, and we'll have, because the previous meeting was canceled due to the weather, but now we're on for tomorrow.
I'm going to have to have a discussion upstate on the timetable of these things, holding you off on these things. But I appreciate your correspondence, and we're just on our way, just want to convey to the residents that there are proposals, and to the administration and Director Galuska, we're on our way for the spring project and summer, and then of course, with our funding. So thank you.
Do you want to continue this to the next meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to continue this item to the next meeting.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, the next item is the first item under new business. This is, you have a visit this evening from Ryan Garrity, the coach of the Mount Hope High School Engineering Robotics Team, along with some of the team members, and they are requesting council support of their endeavors.
Come on up, everybody. We're going to need a wide angle on this one, Mike.
What's George there?
Right on the table, Sean.
Right on the table. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, council. First of all, I want to say thank you for inviting us, and also thank you for the support that you guys have given us in the past. And today, what I did was I actually brought students from all the different teams, because just to see all the different students that are impacted by this, by this type of competition. I mean, we've been lucky enough to be able to go away to some of these other competitions out of the state. We start off the year by, back in September, the students will go ahead and design robots, then build robots, and hopefully that will take them to places other than just a local Rhode Island competition. We're all headed pretty soon, actually, up to Vermont for all the teams to compete, and one of the teams at their competition in Rhode Island already secured their spot at the Pennsylvania Super Regional Competition. So that's definitely, you know, a very prestigious honor to be able to do that. It's actually the same team number, 5030, that was able to do that last year. And as all three teams continue on to Vermont, on March 13th is the date that we leave, the competition is on March 14th, at that point in time, the other two teams can potentially qualify for that other competition. And that other competition that's in Scranton, Pennsylvania, the Super Regional Competition, is March 18th is the date that we would actually leave. So it's very short timing for teams to be able to be prepared to get there. So because one of the teams is already prepared, we're looking at preparing for more than one potential team to be able to go on, as the teams have a very good shot. One of the teams that didn't make it in Rhode Island actually came in second place, so they were so close to it, and these kids just keep on plugging away, whether it's during the school day or after school, sometimes they're there until 9, 10 o'clock. I'm going to have, actually, one representative from each team just talk briefly for about a minute, just to explain different things. The first student that I have is going to give you a little bit of a handle on what this year's particular challenge is, and he's also going to address a robot as it pertains to that. And then I have another student that's going to talk about how they've qualified for that Super Regional Competition at Rhode Island. And then lastly, there's a student that's going to talk briefly about their experience with robotics, and basically what it means to them. Might be one or two students. So the first student that I'm going to actually introduce is Zach Fermianno.
Hello, I'm Zach. I'm going to be explaining to you guys how the, for the first tech challenge, it's the cascade effect. I have a paper, if anyone would like to see it.
Come on up. Yeah, definitely. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Zach.
Is this good?
So the idea for this is the cascade effect. As you can see, in the middle, it's a, it, this thing holds all the balls, and the two long tubes, the robots are supposed to move into it during the first mode, which is the autonomous period, where they put in a, where the students put in a program for the robot where it's supposed to move on its own. And the point is to hit that so all the balls will come down, which is why it's called the cascade effect. Then they'll hopefully be able to take the balls, put them into, they'll be able to take the balls and put them into the rolling goal, and then move them back up either into...
Just got my phone for you right there.
You get to be a game show host.
Yeah.
They'll be able to, the robot will be able to take the ball, or the rolling goal, and as you can see, I don't know if everybody can see here, but there's small little hooks that clip onto this, and they can bring the rolling goals back into their parking...
and they can bring the rolling goals back into their parking zone where they had to park at the beginning and the end of the match. So by the end of the game, you'll have to score an amount of points. That's just decides who wins. To collect the balls, the teams design collection devices. With this, it's just a zip tie collector which goes up and feeds into the, feeds into here, which is going to go up and then it should be able to raise. And there's three different heights for the, for the rolling goals that they have to score into and then bring them back into the parking position. Then there's the driver control period, which is a two-minute period where they pick up the remotes, which they put into the program and they'll be able to move the robots around. Then there's the end game, which is the last 30 seconds where they try to get the rolling goals, which have the balls in them, back into the parking zone. About everything, I'm going to hand it over to Renee.
Hello, everyone.
Hello. Hi, Renee.
I'm Renee. I'm a junior at Mount Hope and this is my first year on robotics. But I'm part of the team Clash Boss that advanced to the Pennsylvania Competition. So we'll be there in the middle of March.
Congratulations.
So I'm going to let you know how we qualified for, to be part of the Super Regional Competition. So we were chosen as runner-up for what's called the Inspire Award. And so there's three teams from the competition who can move on. And so we were one of the spots. And what the Inspire Award is, is part of the first program. They want to kind of like pick two teams that embody their program so that show everything from design, all the way to community outreach, to the robot game as well. So our team was chosen, basically, we had, we were leading in design, our engineering notebook and robot game as well. So what we have to do is, first is not only doing well in the robot game and doing all the challenges, it's also what you do in your community. So we have organized a bunch of things where we, what we're working with is the elementary schools. We want to move robotics to them as well. So we've been mentoring teams as well as doing our own robots. And for design, we had to design our entire robot and computerated design. And so that's something that the judges want to see. And that's all qualifies us with the Inspire Award. So we came in runner-up for that. And so that brings us to the Pennsylvania Competition, which we've been preparing for. So this is a new design and we're trying different things and kind of seeing how we can maybe lead the competition in Pennsylvania. Something else that we're working on is our, for our qualifying for the Rhode Island Championship, we had, we won the Think Award, which is for our engineering notebook. So anything that we do on the robot, we have to log. And so the judges are also looking at that. We do everything. We can put pictures and we have to log everything we do. So anything new, we kind of have to say what we, what our successes are, what our fails are. And that lets the judges know that we're kind of understanding everything we do and we move on. We kind of think of new ways to do things and it's also all documented, so.
That's great.
I'm going to hand it off to Purple Chaos or Underdogs. Here we go.
That's not somebody's name. That's the team name, right?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Austin and this is Nick.
Yeah, I'm Nick.
Good evening. Hi, Nick.
We're going to be talking about our experience over time. We've been here the longest. We've been here for three years, me and Nick. We're going to talk about like, we've been to, talked to multiple people about community outreach and stuff like that, stuff. Like Nick can tell you.
Yeah, like, for example, earlier in this year, we've actually gone to a couple of our schools to introduce them into Lego Robotics. And we went in, we taught them how to program the Lego robots. I think one of them, we did, I think one of the projects we did was, there was kind of a, it was basic, it was just spinning ducks that were kind of alternating, but yeah. And then also, we've gone out, no, actually, no, I'll pass off that.
Another thing I want to talk about is, we've talked also to multiple teams and people to get parts made. As you can see on 50-30's robot, like, we get them special made by other people that make things. And then we get our parts anodized, as you can see, blue, purple, they have like all the colors. And then another thing is, we, me and Nick learned programming, which is kind of difficult to learn until you get into it.
Like the master.
It's a lot of work put into it. You got to know the controls and stuff in order to program it, like the last team was saying. To do autonomous, you have to like know your degrees and stuff, like servos and stuff. And then we also do, like, we learned over time that it takes a lot of dedicated time to build a robot. Over time, like Mr. Gaddy was saying, stay after a lot of, for school. And we have a class, so we spend a lot of time on a robot.
Thank you. Actually, I'd also like to talk about the opportunities that come from participating in robotics because I've been to the world championship. I was in the, I went to the world championship with my team during the, during my first year of robotics. And it was a new experience for me. There were a lot of people there. And there were also a lot of colleges there. And you can get scholarships through doing work with STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. And it opens up just a lot more opportunities for us.
That's great.
Thank you.
That's great.
So I just want to wrap up our mini presentation here by saying that what it comes down to is, it's not just about thinking and getting it right the first time. That's what the kids learn and that's why they put in all the time and effort. It's about eventually coming to the best conclusion and solution that they can as a team. It's all about teamwork. It really is a sport of the mind. Students working together to be able to, you know, do something that normally they wouldn't. That's more academic-based. But yet, you know, it's like a sport if you were to ever go to one of these competitions. A lot of community outreach, like Technico, as I talked about, local company in town helps them out. East Bay Manufacturing, companies that have helped us in the past. And it's just about that community outreach, going to Colt School as we are this coming up Wednesday, extending our invitation to be able to help out in the elementary schools. Trying to get it out to all elementary schools that are in the district. And also doing things to be able to help fundraise, such as they, they have a pasta dinner going on this Friday night at, at 5:00, if you're not already aware. Actually, some of the students do still have tickets on them if you're interested or you can buy tickets at the door.
See, good for you. Now, where is it?
It's actually at Mount Hope High School's cafeteria.
Where is it again? I'm sorry.
It's at, it's at Mount Hope's cafeteria. And you, you can buy tickets at the door for $10 each, so.
Could I just say that, you know, in addition, I think it's great to be bringing this down to the lower grades because they have the, you know, they have programs for every age group. But I also just want to mention and thank you for your generosity in helping new teams get started around the state. So it's not just, you know, you're extending your reach beyond, beyond Bristol and Warren schools. So I was at the competition. I, I, through my program, I sponsor the teams in Pawtucket. And so I'm there rooting for Pawtucket and for Bristol Warren. And, but you, you know, you've been very generous in your time with, with our program, getting it off the ground and, and helping us with various ideas. And I was very happy, I know two of my council colleagues were at the Tinker Bristol last week. And so I'm looking over at, because it's the next big thing that we all want to have, and I think you guys already have it, are the, are the 3D printers. And so I was anxious to get over and talk to the various kids who were there, like All Saints Academy and all the STEM projects they're doing. And there was a MakerBot there. And then I go over, I see this other 3D printer and it's with Orbit Systems. And I'm talking to the guy there and we get talking about the robotics. I told him why I wanted it. And he was from your, he's just out of high school for two years. So I said, oh, you must have come to the council. And he says, yes, as a matter of fact, you tried to recruit me to help work with your program in Pawtucket. But, so I was very happy to see him there. And I think the 3D printer, if I'm not mistaken, is one of his side projects. And so that's what comes out of the work that you all do. And I'm so happy that you mentioned the scholarship opportunities that are available for people who participate in, in this. And if you ever do have the opportunity to go to the competition, I thought this game was a little harder to follow this year than last year's game. But if you ever do go, it really is like a big sporting event. It's people there, a good part of the day. They've got all kinds of music and the teams are going all the time. So it is very exciting and there's other opportunities. It's not just about winning the competition, but all the other awards that you, you mentioned. So congratulations to you. I think I, that day, I said, well, I hope to see you guys at the council meeting in Bristol. So congratulations and good luck to you. And good luck to those of you who are going to, to Vermont to try to get onto the regionals. And then those of you, the team that's going to the Super Regionals, look forward to hearing how you make out. So thank you all very much for everything you do for all of us
Yes.
in promoting this.
Thank you.
Couple of quick points, too, is this started, if I'm correct with my cheat notes that I got sent over from Paul Silva. Yes, cheat notes. Started in 2005 with four students and now there are three teams with 35 students. That's impressive. And the salient point, too, is that there's, and scholarships have been mentioned, but over $1.3 million worth of scholarships. And you can't get those scholarships unless you're involved in this. So this opens a door that wouldn't normally be open, including access to companies, well, if it's a company, NASA is there. I mean, that's impressive, being able to, well, we live in Rhode Island. It's not what you know, it's who you know. So, I mean, being able to speak to people like this is just fantastic. And I know this council has supported you in the past and we're proud to see what you've done and what you continue to do.
I would make a motion that we fund the, the teams at the same amount we gave last year. I don't know, remember what that is?
It was $1,000.
$1,000.
Yeah.
Yeah. Before I second that, I'd just like to thank you for your guidance once again, Ryan, to your students. We highly commend you on your efforts and we're very proud of you as a community. Once again, we wish you the best of luck and I'll second that motion.
And is Mr., is Paul Silva's son or child here?
He was one of the ones who spoke.
Huh? Excuse me?
He's one of the ones who actually spoke.
Because he was a, I see Paul there at the competitions. I'm like, I thought your kid's graduated. But, I think he still has one in middle school, am I right? You and another one in middle school?
His little daughter in middle school as well.
Yeah, yeah.
And just to share one more thing with you, I mean, just today alone, the student that you spoke of, the former student that actually works for Orbit, he, as well as a few other former students that work, that actually go to school over at Roger Williams, came back and talked about the impact the program had. And they're back because they want to help. And, and really, it's not just a K through 12 initiative. It's becoming a K through 16 initiative, so.
I couldn't agree with you more. I'm so proud of this club because you guys are all about applied learning. So you guys probably take a lot of classes in high school and you probably go through and you say, why do I need to learn this? I don't know how I'm going to use this later on, but this is exactly how you're going to use it. And it's going to take you on in the future. We need good scientists and engineers and doctors, so this is great.
I have to just say, I'm sorry, the, this, I think this year, I don't know if you guys felt it, but we certainly felt it. I mean, extra challenging because it was the Friday after the blizzard. And so, you know, there was no school for, I don't know where I was, not until that Friday, which is when you had to go there. But I think you, Bristol Warren, may have gone back to school on the Wednesday or the Thursday. But every, you know, people were out for so many days. And really is a lesson learned to make sure if there's some big prediction like that, to take your robot with you so that you can practice and work on it at that time, so.
The, the objective for, for the kids this year was have your robots done two weeks before the competition. And they were just about done and they're lucky because if they weren't, there's no way they would have been ready for the competition.
Yeah, everybody's constantly always tweaking it and all the, the growth of the program, I mean, I think was interesting, and I've not been involved with it that long. I mean, you know, just like from having the first competition to now we have to have the preliminary competitions because there's so many teams. And they start, I mean, this doesn't get revealed, this game doesn't get revealed until this, I think it's the first Saturday after Labor Day. And the first round of preliminaries is like before Thanksgiving in, in November. So it was a very short amount of time to like get your robot together and to figure out the game and to try to make it through and then on to the other competition. And now they used to go, some of you mentioned that you went directly to the nationals. Now you have to go to the Super Regionals because there's so many teams that you can't just go directly to the nationals. So it's really a, a growing and I think that that's a good thing.
Spectacular. So we have a motion, we have a second. We have a enthusiastic motion and a second, I think, which is great. So any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Missed out.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is from the bond council regarding borrowing and bond resolutions. You have draft resolutions provided.
Do you have a robot, Sandy? No?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. There's actually two different resolutions for two different transactions before you. And so if I could split them up. The first is an ongoing program related to the sewer borrowing. I'm sure you recall that the Rhode Island Clean Water Finance Agency runs a program with the cities and towns that allows you to borrow at a subsidized interest rate. So you first get your tax-exempt interest rate and then they reduce it. So it's a nice benefit for the cities and towns. It's a bit cumbersome in some ways because you have to be well organized and Bristol has been doing this program for over 20 years. And so we have it down. The projects have to be identified in advance. They have to go on a project priority list in advance. They have to be approved by DEM in advance. And then when all of that happens, then the town, along with many other cities and towns in the state, apply for a limited number of funds. So we have been lucky as a community that we have actually received funds in every year. So the first resolution before you is for borrowing for that sewer program. It's going to be in a direct purchase with Clean Water. So the town does not need to wait for Clean Water to do their bond financing. It's going to be a separate loan. And it's for the ongoing sewer program.
So Sandy, what motion did, what, or Julie, can you speak to this at all? Or what motion do we need here?
I think that there's a forms, the first resolution before you is a resolution for that borrowing for Clean Water Finance Agency.
Just adopt the resolution.
Yeah, because it will be separate or part of the second item that we're going to discuss. So with that, I'll make a motion to adopt and approve the bond resolution of our general obligation.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. There's one other thing I want to mention about that type of borrowing that also is good for the town. You don't actually start paying interest on that loan until you actually use it. So you can think of it sort of as a line of credit, if you will. And as you start to use the projects, then you start to pay the interest rate. So it's a pretty neat program. Okay, the second, the second resolution.
Sandy, I just need to drop because I, I'm looking at these resolutions and the resolution they just voted on was the general bond obligation, which is what you're going to speak to now?
No.
No?
No.
The Clean Water Finance.
2.5 million.
Right.
You're saying it's motion
It's just in the
Yeah, but he said general. He didn't say Clean Water Finance.
We can get clarity on that?
Yeah, we just clarify.
It should be 2B.
Yeah.
2B.
They had it
I, oh, okay.
Yeah, it was, I think Sandy, Sandy presented 2.
Thank you.
In the agenda, it's 2A is first and 2B is second. And Sandy presented 2B first.
I knew there were two items, so I had two items, so.
You went
Can we just clarify by saying like the Clean Water Finance Bond? Can we just say the Clean Water
I just misnumbered.
Oh, they misnumbered?
Yeah.
We just say that
Yeah, through the chair, if we could just retract that motion that was just carried for item I to B of a borrowing resolution to the Clean Water Finance Agency.
Right, up to 2.5 million, right?
Up to 2.5 million.
That's the one, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. We got to get this right.
So what do you need?
So I need a second and
A second.
I'll second. Mary.
So we have a mo, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Is there a 2C that we need to worry about here? Okay, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. So the second transaction that's before you tonight is a result of some work that I have been doing with the town treasurer and the town administrator. In January of every year, I usually reach out to Julie and say, you know, what are your borrowing needs for the year? Let's plan them because there are some tax rules that we worry about because we know we have the clean water every year. And it gets everyone thinking about sort of long-term planning. Because it's expensive to do a bond issue, we like to group them in, in projects. And in this year, I started to look at some of the prior bond issues that we had. And the interest rates were at 3.75%, upwards to 4%. interest rates were at 3.75 percent, upwards to 4.5 and higher. And we're regularly doing bond issuances now at around anywhere from 2 and 1/2 to 2.7 percent. That's a great amount of savings. So I asked one of my colleagues, who's actually here as well, from Public Finance Management, to run some numbers on the town's prior bond issues to see if there was any savings if we were to go out and issue refunding bonds. And so the concept is really simple, that if we can go out and issue new bonds at a lower interest rate and when you factor in all the costs to do that bond issue, do you have any savings? And there's usually, if you don't have at least 3% savings, you usually don't do that. So it's important to run the numbers and then to run the numbers with some flexibility, knowing that the market's not always stable, interest rates go up and down. And so PFM ran the numbers and lo and behold, there were three prior bond issues that we identified that the town could save money on. So as we were working through the structure of that transaction, and of course you'll ask me immediately, how much will we save? And the answer is at least $350,000. So it's a nice little savings. But at the same time, we, Julie and I sat down and I said, look, if we're going to do this bond issue and that, those savings are net of all costs, is there anything else that you need to borrow for? Because if you do, we can just do a Series A and a Series B. And so one series would be for the new money and one series would be for the refunding. And she said, gee, you know, we just had a meeting with capital, let me think about it, let me bring in the town administrator and, and let me get back to you. So initially, we were working on a refunding and then she looked at the savings and then she looked at the debt service, the principal and interest payments that you're going to be making every year. With those savings, you can actually slide in some additional projects for the same cost of issuance and at a time when the interest rates are at really an all-time low. So it's sort of a win in many instances. You've got one bond issue, but now you can actually do more with that cost of issuance. And at the same time, we're doing it at a time when the interest rates are really low. Now, there's some caution, and Julie and I talked about this, you know, people use the word shovel-ready in the federal programs. Well, we have another concept that we worry about as well, and that is that you have to actually spend the money within a period of time. You can't just borrow it and sit on it. And so the projects have to be ready, they have to be something that the town would otherwise have spent money on. And so I had a whole list of qualifications for Julie. And so we started out with some projects and then we sort of narrowed it down to approximately 1.6 million. There's a third part to this conversation and that is this. In some instances, when we do a new money issue before the town, we'll say 2 million for the animal shelter. And that 2 million is targeted, you can only use it for the animal shelter, you can't use it for anything else. In this instance, where we were talking really about a capital improvement program, the way I drafted the resolutions was to give you some flexibility in how, if you were to approve the borrowing, how you would use that 1.6 million. And so it's kind of an interesting way of approaching it, which is, we're going to tell the market we're doing it for capital improvement programs. They could be roads, they could be open space, they could be Marina, they could be, and there's this, a list of things that's in your resolution. Now, I know that this is coming fast and quickly because we started out with a refunding and within 10 days or two weeks, we were combining these bond issues. So this resolution does not have it identified to a specific project, it has it sort of for the council's further reflection and identification of what exactly you would spend it for. So that's sort of the history of, in a couple of months' time, what we've been working on. And so what's before you is a resolution that has two parts to it. It has up to 6 million for the refunding and then it has 1.6 million for the new money. And when we mean new money, it's, it's for those, those capital improvement projects. The structure, Bristol has always been a community that's wanted to go out and do a public underwritten transaction. You can either do a private transaction where you negotiate with one party, or you can do it underwritten. One of the benefits of doing it underwritten is you know you're getting the absolute lowest interest rate at the time that you do the underwriting. So, one of the downsides of doing an, an underwritten project is that the cost of issuance can be somewhat higher because you need to get a rating from Standard and Poor, you need to pay underwriters and fees like that. So an official statement to get circulated and the like. So another reason for wanting to sort of do not just the refunding, but a new money piece is that we were sort of, we already had this set cost of issuance, we could actually do more with that set cost of issuance for the town. So the, so the resolution before you also allows for that public underwriting and a, and a bid process and it would be open and, and you'd get the lowest rate for those bonds. So that's the background and that's a little bit of what the resolution is before you.
So Sandy, if we simplify that and also kind of equate it to like a home refinance, it's pretty much, what, what we're doing is here is we're refin, getting a lower interest rate. And because we're looking at a potentially additional projects, we do everything at the same time, the closing costs, if you will, are one as opposed to multiple.
Exactly. That is exactly it.
As you've seen here tonight already and just in our, we've a number of shovel-ready, ready-to-go projects that are looking for funding opportunities. So that's no shortage here for that aspect, so.
Not at all. Not even a little.
Comes at a good time.
It's a no-brainer to lock into those low interest rates.
Right, exactly.
That's.
I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I think the administrator, Julie and yourself, coming here tonight explaining this, but as you stated, there's many moving parts. And I, I just firmly believe there has to be a little more clarity. One of our colleagues is not here and there's a, there's a scheduled workshop pertaining to this. So I'm going to make a motion that we take action on this Tuesday, Tuesday's workshop. And that way we have the five of us and we could talk in depth because we did talk about capital projects and whatnot and just have more clarity and due diligence going forward with this one.
I'll second your motion.
Is there any other discussion?
No, I just wanted to say, I'm Bill Fazoli with PFM. I just wanted to say that one of the things that, like a refinancing bond, none of the original maturities will be extended. All of the bonds will be paid off in the original term. So we're not adding another 10 or 15 years to the original bond. So the 05s, the 06s, the 07s will all be retired by 2027. So there's no extension of maturity.
So if there's 17 years left, there continues to be 17.
Exactly. Yeah, so that's one of the key constraints that we operate under, that, you know, your savings are true savings, you're not just extending the payments beyond the original maturities.
Bill, do you want to, I don't know if you had a chance to talk to Steve today? I don't know if you wanted to speak just briefly on our ratings call that we had today that council might be interested here.
Yeah, this is good news. Let's share this.
Yeah, well, you know, the rating call went well today. We expect the rating to be affirmed, you know, and it really is a testament for the town to be able to go to competitive market because of its high bond rating, you know, being in the double A category. Most, some communities we work with don't have the ability to go to the public markets. As Sandra mentioned, we have to do private transactions on a negotiated basis because they don't always have the best borrowing terms. But because of the town's favorable bond rating, you're able to go to the public market and accept competitive bids and really just, you know, award the bid to the lowest rate at that time. So that's a real strong testament to the town to maintain that bond rating, the strengths that it has, obviously it's, you know, good financial strength, a very moderate debt position and a very healthy tax base as well. So, and there is some discussion about the application of the town's reserves and so of that, but, you know, Julie can get into those once we get the final report, probably in another week or so.
I asked, I have to add to this because we, I don't know if you remember, but we had two notches up the last time we had the ratings call and that was to get to double A plus. So I had to ask Steve Mascherini, Bill's partner at PFM, and I said, how do we get to triple A? Of course, we want to be the best, right?
That's right.
So, so he said, you know, if you get, if you, if you stop the appropriation of fund balance and you get that, that side of your budget house in order, that we are actually looking very close. So.
Wow.
It's somewhat dependent on what happens with the assessment, so we'll be watching that closely also. But otherwise, it seems that everything is in order and that we have all positive feedback from the ratings agency. So I was very pleased to see.
So to that end, that's why it's so important to be in such a great space because it gives you these opportunities that would not be there if you, well, if we, well, you know what, you don't have to be modest, this has a lot to do with you and this is great decisions by this town. So, nice job.
We thank you for coming out.
Absolutely.
We do. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
The, the next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, you have a memorandum from the administrator regarding the request of Joseph McCarthy to, who's working on a project to move an existing house to a new location. And the reason why it's before the council is because it apparently requires some removal of trees, of town trees.
Talk to us, Tony.
Okay. I will. Yes. No, actually, Mr. McCarthy is here as well and he can expand on it in case you have further questions. But due to the fact that our tree warden has been unavailable for medical reasons, I was the one that visited the site with Mr. McCarthy and took a look as to what actually needed to be done there. And as I stated, there is five trees altogether and out of those, two of them are really in, in very poor condition, they actually need to be removed. But the other, the other three, one of them is a fairly young tree and the other two still have some life to it. However, in order to fit the, the house along with the, the trailer, that would have to be, the trees have to, because one side we have trees, the other side we have the telephone poles. And obviously, we can't move the telephone poles, but we can cut down the trees, you know, for that move. And, and as I pointed out, one of the things is, this is a 1903 home that's been, goes back, there's quite a bit of history to it. And obviously, the folks were very willing to donate the house to Mr. McCarthy. However, there is quite a costing curve for the, for the, you know, the transfer or the move of the house. We anticipate that it's going to go on the, over $100,000 for, easily for the move. I know he's been, we've worked with National Grid, I actually, I had Jax, the rep, contact Mr. McCarthy to initiate whatever arrangements need to be made with National Grid. And he also has to deal with the historic commission as well as zoning. Yes. So.
Did you want to speak to this?
No, I, I'm only here if you had any questions. Basically, I don't know if the whole history of the house was that it did, it was donated to the town five years ago or so?
About that, yes.
And sold to St. Elizabeth's Church. But I guess they want to expand their parking lot and the house basically sits right in the middle of the parking lot. So they, you know, looking for some, someone just to take it and you have to move it. And there's only one way out is down Lincoln Avenue. And to either that, it'll, it will be demolished.
It's a beautiful home.
It's in real good shape.
I just used our technology here to pull up the picture of the home.
Oh, it's full of snow now.
Let's go with this picture, right?
Yeah.
Green grass.
By the way, this is my brother-in-law, Bill Cole, it's, the house is going to be placed on his property on the south side on High Street.
I don't object to it. It's just normally, as the administrator said, our tree warden is sick and various boards, Conservation Commission, we usually like just to get some input. But as the administrator said, there's five trees that would be impacted and that's the extent, other than the utility companies, for the clearance to go down Lincoln. Am I, am I right in saying that?
That's correct.
So this would be an ongoing collaboration between all the boards and, and the utility companies going forward?
Correct, yes. And as I stated there, the trees will be replaced.
Now, what capacity? McCarthy's taking responsibility for that, I was reading.
Correct.
Which is great.
What, what capacity of, I guess this would be negotiated, but the trees that are being removed and say, our tree warden says, you don't have to replace the other two because of, you know, where they are. But are they going to just be small trees or how do you go about the size of the transplants of new trees coming in?
The way I look at it, there's not a whole lot of property, the two big trees that, Tony was talking about are in really rough shape. And if the snow's gone, you can see where they're lifting up the sidewalks. I don't believe the sidewalks on that road had been redone.
Okay.
So it's pulling up the properties there, your best bet, and I'm not the tree warden or anything, I think a smaller tree in that area on that street because it's such a tight road.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, what is your timeline for this? Does this pass away till the spring?
They would, yeah. Obviously.
Yeah. You have even less room to move down.
As soon as we started talking about this, it started snowing.
Oh, yeah.
Put it on a sled. Yeah, that's right. Slide it down the road.
But the church would like it out of there as soon as possible, preferably by spring. So one day I'm meeting with the planning board, Thursday with the historic commission, and we're trying to get everything lined up just to keep things moving until the snow melts.
I was curious, I mean, I guess you answered the question, I was trying to think about the property, that there was only one way out. I mean, obviously, Lincoln Avenue, because of where the house is situated, you just go straight shot. But then.
It's right on Monroe. Monroe is even smaller.
Right, right. Right, yeah. And, because I was thinking, you can't really go out, so you can't really get it out by Wood Street then and then down.
Wood Street, there's some major power cables that way. And it's basically going to be moved maybe two and a half blocks.
Yeah, yeah.
And I would imagine to Councilwoman Perella's idea of even going out to Bayview and then going on High Street is the corner.
That wouldn't be possible.
The corner, at least when you go down Lincoln, you have going into Oliver's, so if there has to be maneuvering with that other street that you have clearance for, that's probably the best, best bet.
Absolutely.
So this was the best option for saving the trees?
Absolutely.
The most trees possible?
Yep. To make it financial for, for all reasons to, because even if you went out by Wood Street, you either have to come down Bradford or Franklin and then you're going to get, run into the same problem.
And it is your intention to replace those trees?
Yes.
Okay. What's this council's pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion to grant Joseph McCarthy able, be able to move the existing home to the new location, which is 32 Monroe Avenue.
Or just give to the administrator in the best interest?
The only thing you're doing is approving the removal of the trees. And it would have to be per the regulations that the state specifies. Trees are going to have to be posted and all of that. But that's really the only thing that, that you, you have authority in because the zoning board, historic district commission have other things that.
To adjust the motion to remove the trees.
To, to allow that the trees be removed and that it be done per the state regulations.
I make a motion to grant Joseph McCarthy the right to remove the trees.
Pursuant to state regs, and you might want to add that he replaces.
And he replaces.
The trees as specified by the tree warden?
Yes.
So moved.
And it would be in conjunction with the Tree Preservation Society.
Good.
Yeah.
Second.
So we have a motion in a second, is there, did you want to come up? Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow council members, I'm Pat McCarthy, and I don't even know these people. No relation whatsoever. I have a little bit of experience with the utilities and energy and et cetera, and I don't know the configuration of the layout of the property, but Grid in the past, my experience has been, they can be accommodating to even temporarily moving the power, so I don't know if you've reached out to them or not, but if it does save some trees, it might be a viable option.
They can move the power, but it...
Temporarily.
Oh, the power, yes, but not the poles.
That's the problem, the street is tight.
If you guys could, I'm sorry, if you could come up to the mic when you're speaking, because we can't hear you. Thank you.
The power is not a problem, it's the, the poles that are going to have to be, you know, you can't move the poles. The power lines, I, I got a call yesterday from National Grid, and they're going to send out an engineer and assess everything.
The poles moved also, you need the poles out of the way.
The poles would have to move, yeah.
So it's a width thing, not a height thing?
Yes, correct.
So, by the existing poles being there and the trees being removed, they don't have to move the poles because I, that, I know personally that, to do pole, you, you only have a three, three foot circumference to move poles anyways, for the property lines and, and the pole lines that they configure between the utilities, but as Mr. McCarthy said, they're accommodating, that if you needed height, they would upgrade a pole, and even with the phone and cable, if, you know, if they're in the way, they're going to have to be there during the move anyways.
Correct.
For safety purposes.
Correct. I'm sure some lines probably going to have to be temporarily disconnected.
Yeah.
I'll tell you what, why don't we do this? We do have a motion in a second, we're going to vote on it right now, if there's any, any attempts to reach out to National Grid and there's an alternate solution, then wonderful, but we're going to find out if this council believes that it's fine to remove those trees right now. So we have a motion in a second, any other discussion?
Well, I just want to ask if you could let our Administrator know when the move takes place, and maybe you could let us know, it would just be interesting to...
So we can watch?
See it, yeah, I mean, it might be, take place at night, but, you know, it's always interesting, because when you look at the history of Bristol, there's so many houses that were moved back in the day, and so, you didn't have the power line issues probably, but the technology, I would imagine, is much more sophisticated to move a house now than it was back then, so I'm always amazed when you read back in the 1800s that this house was moved here and there, and you, you do hear of this happening on occasion now, in similar situations, where someone just wants to give the house away because they need the land for something else, but it would be kind of cool to see that going at a relatively short distance, so.
I agree, if you could offer some popcorn, we'd also appreciate it.
We might be able to get into the Fourth of July event.
There you go, right in the parade.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Administrator had something to say.
Just very quickly, talking about move, we, we work in pretty close, keep it in touch, and as things progress, I will keep you informed as well.
That's great, that's a good suggestion.
But, you know, you're talking about, just very quickly, move, I, I do recall two houses, one was the one by Citizens off Metacom, actually, used to be right on where the lot is there, and it was moved down Narrows Road, actually, if you drive down Narrows Road on the right, right-hand side, the foundation is of cement blocks, that's one of them. The other was fairly recent, actually, a few years ago, the, on Hope Street, the one that moved right across by Rockwell, actually, that was part of the high school project when the students did home building construction, and now Paul Valaro lives in it. So, it's an interesting process to see some of those houses being moved. Well, we should look.
So now that the Administrator said that, I will say aye to the vote.
Okay. Motion passes, thank you very much, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Okay, the, the next item is from the Administrator, providing an update on the senior citizen van, that'd be aye for.
Do we have a new van yet?
Well, we've awarded the contract. So we should have one coming very soon our way.
Nice, be Ryan style.
Datacall, it's right here, you know, actually, Jim, Director Galuska and Maria Senior and myself, we met, reviewed the bits, and we came to the conclusion, the best bit, best company would be Datacall, with a cost of $54,998.
What's the delivery date, estimated delivery date?
Please.
What's the estimated delivery date?
Actually, we may get it sooner than later, because they may have one in stock.
Oh, wow.
That's great.
Maybe we could suggest that the inaugural run, to bring some of our senior friends back here for one of our meetings and show us the new van, so.
And then we follow with them after that, go for the ride.
So to Mary's point, a month, no more than a month?
Yeah, I would say yes, no, definitely, within a month, and not only that, he's actually, this company is willing to work with us to transition the other one out of our hands, you know, you know, preferably for, well, not preferably, will be, as, you know, we'll get some, now refund, what do you call, trade-in.
Trade-in value.
You know, trade-in value, so we'll get some money for that as well.
This is good news.
Yes.
Can I have a motion?
And our seniors will be happy.
Yes, they will.
Make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
We have a motion to receive and file in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Also from the Administrator, I'm aye five, this is a, some information on town lighting.
Tony, tell us some more, please.
No, I didn't want to disrupt your thought.
Turn the lights on.
Well, the lights are, ouch, okay.
It's like a disc right there, I just think...
Yeah, I don't know.
Go ahead, Tony, please.
Yes, as you can see, we had a presentation made to quite a few of us, and from the Rhode Island Public Energy Partnership, Sean Allen was the individual that made the presentation, and one of the benefits of that is that they're willing to take on some of the, well, to do an audit of our buildings, so we're going to start, we have three parts to it, one is the audit of the buildings to see the energy usage, the other one is the decorative lights that we have on Themes, Hope and Wood Street that we own, to see if we can retrofit those to LED, and the other part, the last piece, would be street lighting, and whether the town will go ahead and purchase the lighting, those lights, or the fixtures, I should say. So at this point, we, the first thing and the only thing at this point is to give permission to go ahead and do an audit of every one of our buildings, to see how efficient that is.
And this is free, correct? This is no fee to do this, correct?
Right in the bubble, yes, that's correct. There's no cost to that, they will, and what they'll do is, they'll come in, do an audit of all the buildings, and they'll come back with the recommendations, and at that point, we'll decide, you know, collectively, we'll decide what happens next, but at least that's the beginning there, and Walter is actually the person heading the, this team for the, I know we call it town lighting, but I don't like that, so we're going to have to use energy, you know...
Energy savings committee.
Energy savings, I like that a lot better, energy efficiencies, but that's a much better term than town lighting, just didn't jive too well after I put that down. No, it doesn't.
This is, this is absolutely phenomenal, because the cost savings here, there's a multitude of programs out there, and this is the first step to find out what potentially we can improve upon, and there's years of work behind, not necessarily this audit, but looking for opportunities to save money with our electric bills, with our heating bills, with bills in general, so sometimes this is the less interesting but more impactful with our dollars, so this is phenomenal, this is wonderful to get, sometimes, well, every journey starts with the first step, this is the first step, so we can look back at this in a couple of years and say, this is when it started.
Chairman, I couldn't agree with you more, I'm so excited that the Administration, my colleagues and everybody had the, the leadership to see how important this, this project is, this is going to save us real dollars at the end of the day, and I'm just so happy it's moving forward, so thank you for everybody's work, hard work on this, thanks, Walter.
This is one instance where we have to thank the State of Rhode Island for this new program out of the Office of Energy Resources to help municipalities, and it didn't take us long to get on board, I think it's a no-brainer, so I agree.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to receive and file.
Well, second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
And also, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, from the Administrator, you have a memo regarding the schedule of fees.
I think I was a little too ambitious, as you can see, so I, even though I do have quite a few returns, I've asked the Department Heads to do an inventory of nine communities, and for us to compare our fee schedule with them, I did get the majority of them back, and I'm in the process of compiling the information, so it's much more readable and, and easier to compare, so once I get that information, I thought I would have it ready for you this evening for your review, but that's, obviously, you don't have that before you, but I can assure you'll have that for the next meeting.
Next meeting is okay with you?
Wouldn't it be part of the budget?
Well, I, you need to, I, it's two step, two parts to that, one is, you need to review it and agree, should we go ahead and change the fees, and in fact, if you do that, yes, you are, correct, yes.
Right.
So make a motion to continue this item, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
For the next meeting.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
And the next item is a request for executive session, which we'll take up at the conclusion of the public agenda, the next item is item M1, this is the individual council member agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
As Mary mentioned a little earlier, we were, some of us were in attendance for the Tinker organization and them receiving a $50,000 grant, they are going to be located at the industrial park on Wood Street, 500 Wood Street, it's phenomenal, because the, the excitement that was there, I was impressed, there was about 200 people there, I hope I'm not overstating that, and the excitement from our businesses, from the people that attended it, the governor was in attendance, and our new treasurer was in attendance, which is just phenomenal, so it gives us a, a nice shining example for the rest of the state, and, and I'm excited about that, and this meeting is moving right along, so I am also going to move right along, and I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yeah, the Bristol Recycling Committee hasn't been hibernating, we are working hard, we're going to be working with the Director of DPW, Jim Galisca, on planning an amnesty today, and a recycling day, and an eco depot day, so stay tuned, we'll get those dates out to you, we're trying to look at the calendar and figure those all out, and obviously, we want to, you know, keep continuing on with the education outreach to increase recycling, has ticked up to 20%, so we're going in the right direction, but at the same time, we can always continue to keep that education going, and lowering our tonnage and increasing our recycling, and finally, this Sunday is Pedal to End Cancer, and I know a lot of you have probably experienced, somebody who has lost their life or is suffering with cancer, this is a great activity, it's held at Bristol Total Fitness, you can spin for a half hour, and out, two hours, up to three hours, and you can raise money to hopefully wipe out this horrible disease, so if you're interested, you can reach out to the Bristol Total Fitness gym, or it's, you can go onto Pedal to End Cancer, and that's it, thank you very much, and obviously, if you have any questions, you can always reach out to me.
Ms. Perella.
I was just sitting here thinking, wow, it's been a while since Tim gave an update on the recycling, and wondering what's going on with that, so I guess the main thing I have is the same as last meeting, and that is, just asking people to be considerate of not parking in front of people's pathways, with all of the snow, you know, there's not a lot of access onto sidewalks, and it's very frequent along High Street that people park in, in paths, and also downtown, I was noticed today right in front of the library, the one path that was there was blocked, so I think it's, it's dangerous, because then people have to kind of climb over the snow, or go on some other ways that might be far more icy than the path that has been cleared, and people try to keep it de-iced, so if people could be a little bit considerate when they are in the area, that would be very helpful, I think, that's all.
If I may, I forgot two things, first one, our town is doing a wonderful job, particularly DPW, because they're the ones who are driving the plows, they're doing a great job, it's a challenge, I drive through other communities all day, I was up in Brockton a couple of days ago, and the mounds are literally 10 feet high as in the side of the road, but they're also two feet on the road, and that's where our distinction is, is that we do have some tough areas, it's not perfect, but there's no way to make it perfect, so doing a wonderful job, and the other thing is, if you've ever had kids go to story hour at our library, Ms. Molly is leaving us, Ms. Molly's been the story hour teacher there for a while, and she's taken a, a job someplace else, Ms. Emily will be taking over for Ms. Molly, so don't worry, she's going to do a great job, thank you.
We'll miss you, Ms. Molly.
And finally, Mr. Stewart.
Just real quickly, March 7th, which is a sad day evening, the Friends of Animal Shelter will have their annual Mardi Gras at Linden Place, also on the same evening, at Roger Williams University will be the Bedacious Bee, in which this council will be partaking in, along with our town Administrator, so...
And the police department, I understand.
And the police department, so two great events to get out of the cold, but maybe I could send some warmth of, maybe some good thoughts of July, speaking of Roger Williams University, they just got some good news that they'll be hosting the United States Sailing Championship, and I think that's just one more avenue for our town to be a host, in conjunction with our relationship with Roger Williams, for economic impact and, and everything that comes with that, so with that, I'm going to keep the meeting moving along, thank you, Mike Davis, thank you, Mark, and thank everybody for coming out on a cold night, and everybody tuning in at home, thank you.
And town Administrator Jen Niedus.
Well, first, we were very honored, as somebody already mentioned, you know, the Tinker presentation and the, but we're very honored to have Governor Raimondo and our own set magazine, The Treasure, visit with us, and they were at the present, so it was very nice to have both of them in town, in addition to, I believe, the economic, the Rhode Island commerce, you know, so the director was there as well, so there was a great presence to have those folks in town.
I agree.
The IRS, I know there's been some calls about, and I have to address this, because I know some of our residents have been very concerned, I've received three calls myself within two days, you know, and they sort of identified themselves, saying that they were from IRS, and I would be arrested if I didn't make certain payments within certain time and all of that, and it certainly didn't faze me much, because I, I know, you know, IRS would definitely not be calling me, they would show up, they would knock at the door with a search warrant, and they would be taking me away in handcuffs, so knowing that, I just have to alert people out there in public at large, that it may be a concern if you get a phone call like that, dismiss it, but if you continue to receive that, make sure you call the police department, you know, and have them check in, and have a conversation with those folks, but I, within two days, I received three calls, you know, it could be somewhat threatening to someone who does not understand the law very well, and they get on the call, and they're saying, this is from IRS, and they go on in a threatening way with a phone call, so let me just in Portuguese, em português, só para dizer aos nossos residentes que em caso receba uma chamada do IRS ou de um telefone do IRS, qualquer pessoas se identificando como parte do IRS, definitivamente que não é deles, no entanto, não se preocupem, isso não é razão de preocupação, mas em caso continuam a receber chamadas, devem contar a polícia para, a polícia visitar lá e saber o que está a passar e obter informação necessária, so, thank you, and that piece, because it's important, because I'm sure some of our Portuguese residents, again, the same message is, and I was not the only one, I've heard of a few other folks have come here to the town hall to pay their taxes, and they've stated that, so I've told them, worry not, if it was real, you would have somebody knocking on your door. The other piece is with the snow removal, I know Mary just mentioned about the downtown, the library, the Department of Public Works will be doing snow removal tomorrow night, between 6:00 PM and possibly 12:00 PM, so the business will be notified so that they know that, you know, but we'll try to minimize the impact while they're doing the work down there.
I saw the signs there this afternoon, they're already posted, yeah, the signs are there posted.
And I have to thank all the folks, I know, I get phone calls throughout the day about how slippery it is here and there, we tried to do our best to get out there and get to the sidewalks, in fact, as I was driving down here, I saw the small trailer, I mean, tractor, cleaning, you know, cleaning sidewalks, so we are doing our best to keep things going, we'll respond when we can, but everybody's got to be patient, and we, we need some cooperation from everyone, I know the other day, I had to use a peak, literally, to chip some of the, of the ice off my driveway, so we all have to do our share, and just stay put, you know, and we'll continue to do our best as far as we can, that's it, thank you.
If I may, I, I think you just brought up an excellent point, Tony, is, not only did we get this massive snow amount, but it's, we can't get out of this temperature, in these plummeted degrees of zero degrees, there's so much ice buildup, so I think we need a thawing to really accommodate us to do the cleanup that should be done, you know, so it's a time thing, so we need Mother Nature on our side.
Yeah, get out of Siberia here.
The motion would be to convene into executive session pursuant to 42465A2 regarding potential litigation with Clipboard Inc.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.